This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please sign your voluntary petition. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated and violators are subject to ejection and possible prosecution.
It is now six oh one P M. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, National Anthem and Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Establishment of Quorum.
Ruben Reyes.
Here.
Cesar Nevares.
Here.
Alejandro Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Here.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos is absent. Mayor, we have a quorum?
Thank you. Moving on to public comment, item number four.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Maryam Cruz.
Hi, good evening. Am I sounding okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you. I'll try to speak soft and low so that I can be heard. Good evening, everyone. I had a comment, well, maybe a couple of comments. I saw Mr. Reyes's proposal to include idea schools in the pledge of allegiance activities that those elementary students have been doing. And I'm all about inclusivity, but I did bring up a point that I had been wanting to bring up again. I had previously mentioned it many years ago when the first, when the school first, you know, opened up. But I wanted to bring it up again. The sign that they have in front of their school is blinding at night. It blinds drivers at night. I don't know what type of vehicles they're using. I don't know if it's, I really don't know what it is. Because obviously there's other signs about other things around the county. But that sign in particular is, is, is pretty blinding. Obviously not to the point where you can't drive at all, but I would ask that council look into the sign, and I guess I should specify, the sign is a colorful, bright, that rotates with letters, sign in front of a school that I guess makes announcements. And that's the sign that I'm talking about. And it's been an issue for years. And I'm not sure if any council members have driven at night through there. But I do believe that we either need to look at our code and/or just ask them to modify the types of bulbs that they're using or include some sort of filter or something where it's not blinding at night. Because it usually is on all night. And then the second thing I wanted to comment on is the traffic that is occurring in front of that school. Obviously, we had issues years ago in that school in the back where they were taking over that neighborhood through that back exit. And that was a real issue. And I'm glad Chief, you know, took that upon himself and that was figured out. But now there's a lot of traffic on the Rio Vista side during pickup time. Obviously, we're in school. Where in summer is there's no school. But maybe now is the time to figure it out because it's a real issue. I've driven past there during, you know, pickup time. And not only are parents using the Walmart parking lot, which is, you know, I mean, I don't know.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up. Mayor, those were all our speakers? Thank you.
Moving on to presentations, item number five, recognition to Tropicana Homes for their sponsorship to the Veterans Memorial.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The recognition that we are going to be presenting Tropicana Homes today is for their gracious sponsorship to the Veterans Memorial. As you all know, our veterans here in the City of Socorro have, have spent countless hours and just work beyond their regular work schedule to try and make this Veterans Memorial come to life. We understand that their location that they currently have chosen is on the Mission Trail and that's where they want to keep it. And so I reached out to the Bolings. And they did not hesitate at all. They, they, they said, you tell us where, where and when and we'll be there. And so I'd like to ask for the Bolings along with the Socorro veterans if they would come up because Mr. Boling would like to present his sponsorship now to the veterans here. And I want to thank you all for your donation to the Veterans Memorial. And we appreciate the continued support and community efforts here in the City of Socorro. Thank you.
Well, I just, I just want to, you know, thank the City of Socorro. And thank you, gentlemen, for your work and for your service to our country. We can't let the future generations forget and sacrifice things made for our freedoms. The whole meaning is like it is to protect our home order, to protect the greatest country in the world. And our debt, to you and other servicemen and women, can never be repaid. So this is just a token of our gratitude for what we do to help to be there. And you don't know, you always have to threaten Tropicana Homes. Your sacrifice for this country is unbelievable. So thank you very much.
Mayor, for the record, Mrs. Colom Villalobos arrived to the meeting at six ten P M. Good to see you. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the following items. Eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five of plates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Yes.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Moving on to City Manager, item number eighteen, Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution Seven Oh Five, A Resolution Directing Publication of Notice of Intention to Issue Combination Tax and Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation to Provide Funds for Flood Control Projects and Resolving Other Matters Relating to the Subject.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have Esther Young, presenter from financial consultants, Tejerina Galván and Lawrence. This is regarding the Texas Water Development Board, six point six million dollars. And it comes in form of a certificate of obligation with a zero interest, and that's what she'll be presenting.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. As she mentioned, I'm Esther Young from TGL's Dallas office. I'm a director there. We're here to discuss the Texas Water Development Board funding that's coming from their flood infrastructure fund. The total that's been approved for the city already is just over ten million dollars. So about three point four of that comes in the form of a grant that's just a grant, no loan, obligation to that piece. The other piece is six point six four million of a zero interest loan. So that's the part that we'll focus on tonight. That's for planning, acquisition, design, and construction of flood controlled drainage. I think you guys should have this presentation that we provided. So the first page, if we could flip to the next one. So this is just a snapshot of the city's debt as it stands right now. So that first column, you see your assessed valuation. Twenty twenty-two, that one point three, that's the actual certified A V from the appraisal district for fiscal twenty twenty-two. Fiscal twenty-three, that one point five, that's an assumption that we worked on as provided by the city for this, just for purposes of this modeling. So this is how it stands today. You'll see, assuming a ninety-six percent tax collection rate over on that far blue column towards the right, the required I N S tax rate this year that's obviously already set is point one six two two. So assuming no other new debt, that rate would naturally fall to about fourteen and a half cents for fiscal twenty-three. So that's just how it stands right now before this water board funding. If we go to the next page, you'll see we've layered in this new deal. So in that shaded blue box kind of in the middle there, that's your principal, just the six point six six four million. Zero interest loan, obviously, that's a great deal in today's rate environment. There's all kinds of craziness going on every day when we wake up and check the markets. They raised, the Fed raised, you know, seventy-five basis points yesterday, looking at another fifty coming up. So to be able to get money at zero percent is awesome and very beneficial for these projects for the city. If you go to the bottom of that first blue column down here, you can see the total par amount, six point six four million. We're assuming right now preliminary cost of issuance of about ninety-nine thousand dollars, which leaves you with that six point five six for the projects. There's a chance that that C O I could come in. We could compress that a little bit. And so anything that we can squeeze out of that, we'll just go back into that project fund towards that deal. You'll see over in that far blue column with this layered in, assuming it's totally I N S supported. So it's certificates of obligation. So technically, the pledge is combination tax and surplus revenue from the system. So we're assuming here that it's just I N S tax supported. We're not assuming any surplus revenues to, to put here just for illustration. So your tax rate would still be almost right where it is now, point one six one seven. So there's still plenty of room in there to support this loan without having to raise your tax rate or anything like that. If we flip to the next page, it's just a preliminary timetable. So the water board approved the funding on May eleventh. Here tonight to talk about this, so assuming it's approved this evening, we'll publish the first notice of intent tomorrow morning. The second notice of intent for the C O's will be published on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-eighth is a preliminary date to set the, set the rate, which will be zero percent, to lock that in with the water board. That date might move a little bit. It's, you know, it's dependent on the water board's schedule, but sometime right around there. We'll officially lock in that zero percent, bring it back to you guys on August fourth, and close on September first. And that's when those funds will be available to the city for the first outlay. The last page is just a quick overview of your working group. Your financial advisor, TGL, bond counsel, McCall Parker, St. Horton, who's always available to answer any of the legal questions. Paying agent, we're looking at using B O K F, Bank of Oklahoma, for this deal, just because they're the most cost effective. And Texas Water Development Board as the lender. And that's just a quick overview of that zero percent loan. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Ms. Villalobos?
How did we get so lucky?
Your city did a great job of applying for the funds. And so the Texas Water Development Board has a fund specifically for flood areas, the flood infrastructure fund, they call it fifth funding. And they, that's allocated every year and depending on the project and the needs as they review it, different portions of that are available for a grant. So it worked out that thirty-four percent of your total funding you can get as a grant and not even have to pay back any principal. The rest of it at the flood infrastructure fund is zero percent if you qualify. So they liked the project and they, and it fell into all their qualifications for it. So it's a great, it's a great opportunity and it's a great deal on that loan.
Thank you and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty, Discussion and Action on Approving the Issuance of the Fiscal Year Ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, Annual Financial Report by S B N G, Certified Public Accountants.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have Alejandra Garcia from S B N G, Certified Public Accountants, to give you a brief overview of our fiscal year audit.
Good evening, Mayor Avalos and City Council. Thank you for having me here today. My name's Alejandra Garcia. And I'm an auditor at S B N G. We were engaged to perform, to perform the audit of fiscal year September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So I'm here with a brief overview of how the year went for the city. So for this presentation, I do have for you all a five-year trend analysis. There are a few audit highlights that we have for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. There is also something that I would like to note, given that this year was a single audit for the city. And there are just a few recommendations towards the end of the presentation. So I want to start with the statement of net position. It's all really good news. Our total assets did increase by almost fifteen percent from last year. We have total liabilities and deferred inflows, which experienced an eighteen percent decrease. And that led to a pretty good net position at the end of the year, which resulted in a nine percent increase, about thirty-two million dollars. So now a little bit more breakdown on the statement of net position. We do have cash on hand of five point three million. Pretty much, there are two types of cash, two groups of cash. The other one would be restricted cash, which did increase this year to seven point nine million, almost eight million. And that is mainly due to our P A grant funds. So those funds remained as deferred revenue at the end of the year and are to be spent during fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Again, we have investments which stayed at two point five million. Total infrastructure and equipment remain pretty significant at forty-eight million. And we have a total balance of certificates of obligation of twenty-eight point five million. So our total revenue did see an increase as well for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We are looking at approximately sixteen million in revenue. And that is also mainly made up of the biggest source, which would be property tax revenue. We had a lot of grants this year as well, which contributed to that figure. Our total expenses remained almost comparable. There was a little bit of an increase due to more COVID nineteen expenses that were incurred. But that still leaves us with a net income of two point six million. Also, for the statement of activities, we have about six million of capital outlay expenses, which are not presented as expenses for the government-wide financial statements. So here's a little bit more detail on the property tax revenue. It was nine point three million for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So that's about fifty-six percent of our total revenue for the year. The rate for twenty twenty-one did stay pretty comparable at eighty-three cents for a hundred dollars, pretty similar to what we had last year. Now, onto federal and state grants, you will see that there was about three point one million recognized this year from grant revenue. Most of the funds were used for infrastructure, COVID nineteen-related expenses, more equipment, and police salaries. The third largest source of revenue is sales taxes. And those did increase during this year. So that is a good sign, meaning that there's more activity in the, for local businesses. If we do a little bit more of a breakdown on the expenses, we do have our police department being the biggest one. Next to that would be infrastructure. The infrastructure department would be the second largest expense at four point two million for the year. Our government administration expenses were the ones that increased a little bit more this year due to all those COVID nineteen-related expenses. However, those were funded by one of our main grants that we audited this year. Other things that we have in there that are pretty significant would be depreciation expense at one point six million and interest expense. Here we have what our fund basis assets were. They're at twenty-seven million. Our liabilities for fund basis, fifteen million, and our fund balance is eleven million. Here is a little bit more detail for each fund that we consider a major fund for the city. We have the general fund, which remains the largest. There is ten million in assets. We have a fund balance of seven million, and that's still generated net income during the year. Same as special revenue, there's an increase in that fund. All the grant funding goes into that fund, so we do end up with a net income for the year. There's also debt service. That one we had bond refinances, it shows a net loss for the year, but that's mainly due to a reserve that we have presented as an expense for the refinancing bond. Capital projects remains pretty significant. That's where all the funding, the reserves for the current projects is going. So that still remains pretty big. There were more projects, infrastructure projects during the year, which were partially funded by federal grants. And here's the five-year detail or analysis. We can see that property tax revenue did increase from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Sales tax revenue also increased due to more local consumption. Grant revenue increased by a pretty significant amount, which is good. Most of the activity was funded by these grants. We have infrastructure increasing accordingly to our, to our grant revenue. And long-term debt that it increased a little bit. There was one bond refinance, which, which pretty much, pretty much led to that decrease. Our total assets have kept increasing at a steady rate and our cash mainly because of all that extra funding that has been received. Now, I want to discuss a little bit more on the single audit portion of the engagement. This year, the city spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant and federal awards. So that's the reason why we had to do a single audit. And the way this works is we put together a summary of all the grants that the city has received along with their expenditures, and we select the major programs or what we believe to be the major programs. or what we believe to be the major programs after our analysis. In this case, what I want to go over first is the opinion on the overall financial statements. So we have an unmodified opinion. That means financial statements were prepared in accordance with GAAP, and they are thoroughly stated. So that is the cleanest opinion someone can receive on a set of financial statements. Now, we did have two major programs during the year, and those were the Coronavirus Relief Fund program. And we also had highway planning and construction, which is mainly related to Texas. So for each program, we do a series of testing procedures, and we arrive at a conclusion based on what we tested. On Coronavirus Relief Fund, we do have an unmodified opinion. Everything was good-to-go, everything we looked at was perfect. On the Texas dot funding, we have a qualified opinion on compliance requirements. However, that is a qualified opinion due to one finding that we did come across. Okay, so here's a little bit more of an explanation as to what that finding was about. We were looking at the program expenditures. We did come across several invoices that had been rejected by Texas initially upon initial submission. Those invoices amounted to three-point-seven million. City management worked with Texas. They were able to resubmit approximately one-point-four million worth of those invoices. And those invoices did get approved for reimbursement. Now, what that leaves us with is two-point-three million of expenses that have yet to be submitted to the pass-through entity, which would be Texas. Pretty much, the reason why this happened is because the city is working directly with an engineering company. Engineering company had some turnover. They submitted several invoices that were not correct, mathematically correct, some missing information. So there was a little bit of missing information in those invoices. And the reason why we have so much money that's still pending is because these are pretty big invoices. Each invoice, we can be looking at two-hundred-thousand dollars, right? So there was that problem on the side of the engineers. And from the side of the city, well, it was a lot of working with the engineers to get the right information, to get submitted timely to them, so they could submit it to Texas. Now, it is my understanding that there was also some turnover for the city during the year. So that left quite a huge void and a lot of information that was unknown at the time that the previous planning director left. So mainly, that is the cost of this finding from what we have discussed with city management. Now, there was a corrective action plan implemented by the city before our audit. So what's currently being done is the internal auditor is reviewing all the supporting documentation. She is trying to get all the invoices, all the time cards, everything necessary from the engineering firm in order to resubmit Texas and continue receiving these reimbursements for the pending reimbursement requests. So that would be part of our response. Also, we did have a meeting with the city manager, with Mr. Casiano. We went over a few options that could help improve this process, reinforce the review that the internal auditor is doing. And that would be a specific training provided by Texas for the people involved in the grant. So this training would be for the planning director, the city development director, for the internal auditor, for them to complete in order to become a little bit more familiar with what the requirements are. And also, we recommended to establish a written policy that goes according with the Texas manual for these type of projects. They do provide a lot of recommendations and guidance on how to make sure that the work that is being built by the engineer is actually being performed and that there is progress, right? So that is pretty much what our recommendation as auditors would be for this situation. So that's pretty much what I just mentioned. I just let myself go. Thank you. Now, we have a few highlights for this year. There were new accounting standards implemented in our report. For fiscal year twenty twenty, we used to have a little breakdown of the four-fifty-seven plan that the city provides. Now, with this new standard, Yasby Statement Number Eighty-four, we are not required to report that, given that the city is not considered the main administrator of that program. The city doesn't have direct control over those funds, so it is not required to be reported in our financial statements. There's also, the first few pages of the report will detail more of what the significant accounting estimates are that affect the city the most for their accounting. So this pretty much concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us. I have the contact information there for the shareholders involved in the audit. Again, thank you for having me in this meeting, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask questions, or is this a presentation?
No, no, you can ask questions.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Mr. Cruz?
Yeah, I have questions, because I don't like emailing. So compared to our peers, I understand that there was new accounting policies implemented, but compared to our peers now, how, I mean, how do we look? As far as the accounting?
As long as the accounting, we do see a really good position. The city is in a really good financial position. It is seeing a lot of growth. You know, we have other clients that are also local governments, and we see that the city is pretty much keeping up with that, keeping up with the growth, having new infrastructure projects, getting the funding from this project. So we would say it is pretty comparable. It is making progress every single year that we audit, hence the increases that we noted while we were putting together this information.
And that's good to hear. Another question that I had was because it was mentioned during your presentation that there was turnover, and there was some information that the firm couldn't get a hold of. Just to make that clear, that was not on behalf of our organization. It was the engineering firm that was experiencing this, that caused these issues for our city, correct?
So based on our discussion with city management, we did note that the turnover was on both sides. The engineering firm was experiencing turnover, and I think it was specifically the project manager. So on the city's situation, it was the planning director previously. So they are two very important figures in these projects, and that costs a lot of information to not be available when the new people took over.
So which brings me to my final question.
No worries.
As far as the IT controls and risks, how do we look as a city in case anything like this is to happen? Our IT department can go in there, extract the information that's needed so that we can continue working on a project like this?
Right, so part of our audit procedures was speaking with IT personnel. I personally spoke with Mr. Esteban here, and based on what we've been seeing, based on the conversations with him, the city's internal IT controls are very strong. They are very strong. We were able to have a pretty thorough conversation about them, and they were pretty satisfactory for us as auditors. Thank you. I'm sorry, any more questions?
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you. My biggest question is, the mathematical others and the math pending, how does a written policy look for us as a city moving forward with engineering company?
So that was also part of our discussion. I know the city manager wants to plan to have an external engineering firm, more of an unrelated party to this entire project, to help city personnel while reviewing all these invoices from the engineering firm that's working on the projects. So that would be of great help. Sometimes, we can be accountants, auditors, and might not have that very technical expertise in engineering to be able to detect these issues from the root. So that was a pretty good idea, and we do think that it's a good way to take it from there.
Okay, but maybe to Ms. Duarte. What the language would look like? What kind of safeguards do we have in our contract? What language would it use for us as a city to make sure that the monies, the grants, and all that keeps coming in on errors from them?
Correct, so first and foremost, I believe that we go out and request for qualifications to hire professionals that you know have expertise. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case here. On this new RFQ, we tried a different approach by at least getting three firms that are going to be presented at the next level, at the next council meeting, to have the engineering firm that's designing, and then you have another one that's managing it. There's checks and balances, two different firms talking engineers to engineers. And I think that's the way that we can protect ourselves moving forward, that you actually have someone that knows their lingo and can, you know, bounce information off of one another and provide us expertise. And that's how we plan on correcting this issue.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to mayor and council, item number twenty-three. Discussion and action to approve the appointment of Ricardo Avalos to the Ethics Commission, Place Five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-four. Discussion and action to approve the appointment of Alberto Lagunas to the Board of Adjustments, Place Three.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-five, swearing in a newly-appointed commissioner.
Mr. Lagunas is the...
Mr. Lagunas? Mr. Avalos?
I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the Board of Adjustment of the City of Socorro, Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public or employment as reward of securing my appointment or confirmation thereof. Congratulations, Mr. Lagunas. Thank you.
Grab this, sir?
Yeah?
Yeah, so you can sign.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Avalos?
Item number six. Presentation by city manager regarding the May twenty-twenty-two monthly report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to provide you some highlights from the departments for the month of May. Municipal Courts Department collected seventy-one thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, received three-hundred-and-sixteen citations from Socorro PD, twelve citations from DPS, fifty-five animal control, and sixty-two ordinance violations. Our HR department did not have a civil service due to lack of quorum. For the month of May, we had zero separations, and we did have a new hire, Laura Arendondo, our wellness coordinator. Our Parks and Public Works Department is working on the thunder covert, cleaning, preparing for monsoon season. Since yesterday, we are officially monsoon season. So we're preparing for it. Clean city-owned property at One Ten North Nevaris, assisted with candlelight visual and website lounge, and continue with a systematic approach for weed control and maintenance for all parks. Our police department received two-thousand-and-ninety-five calls for service, made forty-eight arrests, started the Citizens Academy on May twenty-fifth, and it runs all the way through July thirteen. Officers continue to attend training to keep them in compliance with certification for TECO requirements. Our city clerk department prepared agendas and minutes for meetings scheduled for May fifth and nineteenth, received thirty-three open records requests, responded to twenty-eight, and prepared for publications. Our Planning and Zoning Department collected seventy-seven thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars for the month, issued three-hundred-and-fifty-six permits, forty-nine registrations, five applications, and issued a hundred-and-eleven letters. Our code enforcement issued two-hundred-and-seventeen notice of violations, a hundred-and-twenty-three cleared, issued forty-nine citations. Our animal control received two-hundred-and-nine calls for service. There were thirty-one impounded animals, and there was twenty-five citations that were issued. Our Recreation Department celebrated the month of May for Historic Preservation Month and featured stories and educational information on historic sites in Socorro. They did our new website launch, hosted the employee softball event, had the Uvalde visual. They actually conducted, eight-hundred-and-forty senior meals were delivered, fifty-two welfare calls were conducted, and celebrated Mexican Mother's Day, treating the seniors to a lunch buffet. There was no HLC meeting due to lack of quorum, and also kept up with all social media platforms, media inquiries, and press releases. Our IT department started the network cable installation for our new dispatch building, assisted with the city council and commission meetings, and troubleshooted IT... assisted with the city council and commission meetings, and troubleshooted IT-related issues for all city departments. Our Grants Department for May prepared and submitted reimbursement requests to funding agencies totaling seventeen, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, including nineteen thousand eight hundred via the um President Communities Grant, twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-one for West Texas HIDA program, and forty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-seven for the US Department of Justice. Their annual audit responded to all external auditor's request information regarding grant contracts and reimbursement and submitted single audit samples as requested. The CARES Act responded to El Paso County's request for information regarding the city's CARES Act allocation. For the nonprofit, they coordinated the directors' meeting on May twenty-fifth and developed, published, and promoted the executive director position for the initiative. Our Economic Recovery Department um did the Socorro Small Business Meeting on May second at Moonlight Adobe Hall, assisted aid Socorro small businesses via the Cida, Cities Program, providing four thousand four hundred dollars in financial assistance to small businesses, and prepared the RFP for future Small Business Recovery Grant Program. Our city auditor finalized review of Banker Killens Reconciliation and Journal Entries for the month of May and continued with the review and submission of invoices from Dynamom Engineering. Did I go too fast? Do y'all have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Regular agenda, Grants Department. Item number ten. Discussion and action to enter a memorandum of understanding MOU between the City of Socorro and the Lift Fund Inc. to foster small business and entrepreneurship programs and support in Socorro, Texas. Do I need a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdez, City Development Director. Uh, we're requesting your approval for an emer- memorandum of understanding between the City of Socorro and Lift Fund Inc. Uh, Lift Fund is a nonprofit corporation and a community development financial institution serving the El Paso area. They do provide technical assistance, access to capital for startups and small business owners that qualify under their guidelines. Um, and we'd like to establish a partnership with them so that we can bring more of their resources and technical assistance programs and training here to Socorro businesses as part of our, our economic recovery activities under ARPA. I'm not sure if y'all have any questions.
Mr. Cruz?
It's not a question, it's just more of a comment. Um, I'm very pleased that the city has taken that route to partner up with Lift Fund. Um, a lot of times, small businesses or even residents like ourselves who own small businesses, rather than go to your traditional bank for funding, uh, small projects of some sort, maybe you're a contractor, maybe you have some other type of small business, they rely heavily on like predatory lenders and they don't know that those two thousand dollars that they borrowed from them, it's going to end up costing them more than double or even triple that. So I think the city's taking a, a step in the right direction and being able to bring Lift Fund in here because that's what they're known for. Um, I believe before Lift Fund, they were called, uh, I can't remember the name.
There's, there's also People Fund and there's, uh, there's several CFDI's out there.
And, and, and Lift Fund is, is one of the, uh, the more successful ones in, in the area here and well-known. So I appreciate you guys taking the initiative and going out there and partnering up with them. Thank you, guys.
I have a question.
Mr. Reyes?
Just quick, what kind of businesses are gonna benefit from, from the Lift Fund?
So in the past, we had partnered with Lift Fund for, under CARES Act funding as well. And uh during that call for, for grants and grant applications, um, we assisted, I believe, over twenty businesses and they were ranging from um beauty salon to a restaurant, to an event venue, so it, it was open to, to all types of businesses. For this new, once we develop our new grant program, um, and if Lift, Lift Fund is a part of that too, what we will do is we will bring a policy to council for you all to approve what types of bi- businesses would be eligible for those grant programs. Um, right now, what Lift, Lift Fund has available um is specific to Lift Fund only. Uh, but when we develop the program through the city, city council will have an opportunity to put, to put together that your priorities for who will get the funding.
Ms. Villalobos?
You did, you did say startup, so Lift uh funding is also part of, of that um, what is it, agreement for startup? And if it's a startup, do they have to have already their plan? Or can they go in there and talk to them about, you know, what they wanted, what their ideas are?
Right, so that's the beautiful thing about partnering with different organizations. So in the past, we brought an MOU to partner with Project Vida. Now we have a partnership with Lift Fund. We're also trying to get another, a partnership with uh Texas Workforce, um, Borderplex Workforce Commission, I believe. Um, and various partners so that these partners can, can help our small businesses apply and go through the application processes. Because you're right, a lot of our small businesses don't have a business plan ready to go or they may not have their, their accounting uh files ready to be submitted for an application. So that's the beauty about putting together all of these partnerships that we'll be able to get assistance from various partners to help our businesses be ready to apply for these funds. That's, that's a goal.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number eleven, discussion and action to enter an agreement with the National Trust for Historic Preservation, NTHP, for the Telling the Full History Preservation Fund Grant Subaward to City of Socorro, Texas in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, we, the City of Socorro was awarded a grant by the National Trust for Historic Preserv- Preservation under the Telling the Full History Preservation Fund um in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the Rio Vista Farm Connections Project. In order to receive the funds, we have to enter into an agreement with the National Trust. This grant agreement stipulates the approved grant budget, the use of the funds, the documentation requirements, reporting schedule, and other grant agreement clauses. Um, this grant does not have a match and the grant will focus on uh developing first-time public humanities programs, highlighting the history of Rio Vista Farm for K through twelve students to come and take tours, talks, platicas. Uh, and Vic, our department head Victor is in charge of that program, so I'm sure he's gonna do wonderful things uh once he gets started.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twelve, discussion and action to approve Resolution Seven-O-One and Execute Amendment One to the Advanced Funding Agreement, AFAA, with the State of Texas, acting through the Texas Department of Transportation, Techstat, for the Bovi Bridge Replacement Project in Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um, the City of Socorro, as you know, has been working on several Techstat projects. One of them is a Bovi Bridge Replacement Project. When we initiated this, this project um a couple of years ago, we had to enter into an advanced funding agreement with Techstat. The advanced funding agreement stipulates all of the program requirements as well as the estimate of direct costs. There was a change in the project budget and so because of that, we have to, again, um, approve the amendment to that advanced, existing advanced funding agreement, which is what you have before you. Um, as a, as a requirement, we also have to pass a resolution um including the updated order minute from the Texas Commission of, Texas Transportation Commission. And so that's what you have here today.
Ms. Varte?
And I just want to add that the funding changes had already been approved by council and different agenda items in the past. We're just trying to solidify it through a resolution.
Do we have a motion?
Motion? Motion to approve?
I believe there was already a motion.
There was.
Yes, I just didn't hear.
Oh, um, it was Mr. Garcia and, and Mr. Nevaris.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number thirteen. Discussion and action to approve Resolution Seven-O-Two and Execute Amendment One to the Advanced Funding Agreement, AFAA, with the State of Texas acting through the Texas Department of Transportation, Techstat, for the Rio Vista Bridge Replacement Project in Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is another advanced funding agreement that requires an amendment. Um, this is now for the Rio Vista Bridge Replacement Project. Uh, you can see from Attachment D-One, there were uh a few changes to that budget. The line item for the items that city council has already approved in, in previous council meetings is also included in that budget.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action to approve the ratification of Amendment One to the Advanced Funding Agreement, AFAA, with the Texas, the State of Texas acting through the Department uh of Transportation, Techstat, for the Passmore Shared Use Path Project in Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, again, this is another amendment to the existing advanced funding agreement with Texas, Techstat, this time for the Passmore Shared Use Path Project. For this project, there was actually an increase in funding made available through the El Paso Metropolitan Planning Organization under the TASA funds for this project. And so that changed our uh Attachment B-One project estimate that is included in your backup and we're here requesting the approval of the amendment and the resolution as well.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, discussion and action to approve the detailed budget for the ARPA Economic Recovery Program.
Motion to approve? Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are requesting your approval of the detailed budget that is included in your backup for the Economic Recovery Program. Uh, this is for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. Um, we will be bringing you a detailed budget for each of the projects that you saw during the Capitol Workshop on Saturday. Each of those um have varying amount requests, but now we're working with our department heads to put together a detailed budget so that you will see exactly how those dollars will be spent. And it'll also help us track expenditures and make sure that we're, we're completing all requirements per the project type according to the guidance that has been released by the US Treasury.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Moving on to Planning and Zoning Department. Item number sixteen. Discussion and action to approve Resolution Seven-O-Three approving a preliminary and final plat for Calle de la Bosque del Piro subdivision being tracks ten, eleven A, eleven B, eleven C, eleven D, and eleven E, block twenty Socorro Grant, Socorro, Texas, and approving two variances. One, a variance to allow for a small, a lot smaller than the required one acre in A-one agricultural zoning, and two, a variance to allow for a reduction in the front yard setback.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Carlos Guinan with Planning and Zoning Department, hope you all are doing well. This is a combination plat, so as you know, usually we get the preliminary and we get the final, but when there is no uh public improvements being dedicated to the city, we could do both concurrently. This is a parcel of land or parcels of land that have never been plotted. They're still in the Socorro Grant track form. And so the applicant is, my understanding, is wanting to, it's all within the family, so they're trying to subdivide the land in such a way that some is given to another and then some is given to another family member. Um, so again, the name of the subdivision is Calle de la Bosque del Piro and it's a combination uh subdivision plat. And then there are, there are two variances because on Lot Four, there's an existing structure that does not meet the setback requirements and I'm gonna walk you through that as well. So here's the information again. Um, summary is to approve a preliminary plat and final plat and the variances. Zoning is R-One, single-family residential, about eighty percent of the lots are R-One and then you have a twenty percent that are A-One. It's about four point four acres in size. Here's the address on the corner of Carvajal and Bovi. Uh, land use map is residential, uh, yes, the, excuse me, the future land use map is residential. The land used currently is you have single-family homes on those lots. And then again, the request is to approve the preliminary and final and then the two variances. And planning staff and PNZ are both recommending approval. Here is the location map. Did you, did you, yeah, you skipped a few. So again, on the corner of Carvajal and Bovi, you have about four parcels of land. Here's the zoning map, so as I mentioned, about eighty percent is R-One, twenty percent is A-One. Here are the property pictures. Next slide shows the aerial images. Next slide, please, just a few more uh aerials, so again, you see Carvajal and Bovi. And then the larger view of the aerial, just to give you an idea of where this is located. And then this is the original Socorro grant, next slide. So it shows the layout of three of the four parcels. There's the, the one that's A-One is not shown on this map, but it shows essentially how the, how the lands were subdivided uh many, many years ago. Here's the preliminary plat. So again, you have, now you have the four struc- the four properties, you have three homes. Um, here's the final plat showing the property outlines. And then I'll walk you briefly through the variances, next slide. So if you see Lot Four, when, now that it's being subdivided, um, the structure does not meet the front setbacks or the minimum lot size. So the first variance is that the front setback on an A-One is thirty-five feet. Uh, the current structure is at about fifteen feet from the property line, from the street. And then the second one is on an A-One, it requires a minimum one acre and this lot is just under an acre, it's at point nine-two acres. And so those are the two variances. If the council approves these, they would become notes on the plat. And so for any future development, we are, we'll be able to see that there have been some variances approved. And so just quickly, again, summary of the request is to approve the preliminary and final plats, approve the variance request. Staff and PNZ are recommending approval.
Motion to approve?
Happy to answer any questions, yes, sir.
Mayor, ma'am.
Sorry.
And I'm sorry, you need a second.
Mr. Martinez?
Did you get a second, believe me?
No, 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 second.
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the resolution, because it's an, it's a plat, you're not, because it's, yeah, because it's a plat, are you gonna have an ordinance for it eventually or is the resolution standalone?
So my understanding, Mr. Martinez, is that subdivision plats are approved through resolutions.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's true. I just wondered if it was di- different because it's preliminary and, and final at the same time.
Yeah, I don't think it matters whether, so if I was presenting the preliminary and not the final, it would still be done resolution.
Okay, Mayor and, and Council, the only, and I'm sorry, Jim Martinez, city attorney. The only other recommendation I would make, I realize it's not an ordinance, it's only a resolution. Nonetheless, I would, I would quantify in the text of the resolution the, the variances that Mr. Guinan described, which is reducing the front setback for Lot Four to fifteen feet. Permit that as a variance, did I get the number right, Carlos?
Let me pull it up, Mr. Martinez, I'm not, let me see what I wrote. So the resolution that I have is um allowing the following variances. One, a variance to allow for a lot smaller than the required one acre, so...
But, but to quantify it, it's fifteen feet is what they're seeking, right?
Yes, and then a variance to allow for a reduction in the front yard setback.
To as low as point nine-two acres.
Yeah, so we could...
I would simply suggest a floor amendment to make, to quantify those two variances in the resolution.
Yes, sir.
I amend my mo- my motion to uh put the setbacks at fifteen feet and nine point two, nine point nine-two point two-eight feet. Second.
No, point nine-two acres.
Point nine-two acres, yes, sir.
Sorry. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, discussion and action Res- Resolution Seven-O-Four, approving a request from the City of Socorro to the El Paso Electric Company to relocate items due to roadway and shared use path improvements. One, relocation of electric pole at the corner of Rio Vista... of Rio Vista and Alameda. Two, relocation of electrical pole at the corner of Bovi Road and Alameda Avenue. And three, relocation of two guy wires along Passmore Road.
Motion to approve, second.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Once again, Carlos Gaynor. So this is an item, it's actually a request from the EP Electric that we formalize the request from City Council to EP Electric to move some of these power lines as part of the three different projects. Again, Rio Vista, Bovi, and Passmore. The slide, the first slide gives you a little bit of the background that's part of your, of your backup, but essentially what's happening is there's a relocation of some power lines with the franchise agreement that the city has with EP Electric. It would require EP Electric to move those lines at their cost. However, they just need a resolution from this body to get the wheels moving in that regard. And so the, I'll go through it quickly. The, the next slide shows the relocation of Rio Vista. I know it's hard to see, but you could see where it says existing utility pole. And so that existing utility pole would be moved to where it says proposed utility pole. You see the two red dots? Next slide shows the exhibit for Bovi. And so again, you see where it says at the very top of the circle, proposed utility pole. Yes, sir. Thank you, Victor. And then existing utility pole, those, that's where that would be relocated. And then the final one for Passmore, you have those two guy wires, which are the wires tethered to the ground, that those two would be relocated as well. They're, currently they're in the path of where the shared use path is going, and so we need to relocate them as we get closer to finalizing the construction documents. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Villalobos? In the past, we've added utilities and whatnot, and the residents were, some of them were upset because they put a big tower or whatnot in front of where they already felt it was reduced vision. And now with this thing being there, did we get any constituents that came out and voiced their opinion regarding the, the relocation?
So, yes, ma'am, I'm trying.
And I was just going to say, it's because I was trying to see if there's houses there, but I'm not sure.
So they, to answer your first question, we didn't go out to the public. This isn't a, like a rezoning case in which we would send notification to the general area. And so, no, we didn't get any, any feedback from the publics. And then, and then just also note, there are slight, there are really slight movements, right, of like four or five feet. And then on which one in particular were you asking if there's residences?
On all of them.
Well, yes, yes, ma'am. So Bovi and Rio Vista, there's residential areas around there. Again, the way that it's been designed is to, one, we have to move them, right, because they're in the path of where new sidewalks and new rightways going. And then, two, I believe that it's designed in a way in which you're, you can't put it in the middle of the street. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that's what you're saying.
Right.
But it is put in a way where it does have to, it, it cannot, the view of traffic.
No, and, and I get it.
Yes, ma'am.
But let's say it's a driveway and it's right next to the driveway.
No, there's no driveways. Yes, ma'am. That's, there's no driveways.
Okay, gotcha. Well, okay.
Got it.
Gotcha.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving on, City Manager. Item number nineteen. Discussion and action to approve Mayor, Council members, City Manager and staff members to attend the T M L one hundred and tenth Annual Conference and Exhibition from October fifth through October seventh, twenty twenty two, in San Antonio, Texas.
Motion to approve, second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have our annual conference coming up in October. The reason it's so early on in the agenda is just that the sooner we get, you know, the reservations, the, the most cost effective it is, right? So that's why it's here. We can get with Norma to see who would like to attend. I just brought it up to see if we can approve it. That way we can start coordinating and making the travel arrangements.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Moving on, Mayor and Council. Item number twenty-one. Discussion and action to direct staff to research options and develop proposals to impose or revise setback requirements for properties with swimming pools. So I had, oh, we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Can we suspend the rules to let this gentleman speak?
Motion to suspend the rules, to give them three minutes. Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
I have some sheets, ma'am. Can I provide them to you guys?
Sure.
First thing here. Thank you. Hi, so the sheet I have provided over to you guys.
Sir, would you please state your name?
Oh, my name is Anthony Alvarado, ma'am. I'm calling, I'm coming from Enova Custom Pools and Spas. And the sheet I provided over to you is a typical six thousand square foot lot. And what we're trying to do is change the setbacks of the pools from ten to five feet, which we've been working with in multiple cities and counties, and that's their setback. The reason why the client or the owner loses a lot of space if you implement the ten feet and the ten feet. Nowadays, you know, the infrastructure for the buildings, they are a lot better. The utilities are on the streets, and we can do a way kind of more with those easements that were originated in nineteen eighty-six. And through these, these past three years, you know, the progression of the pools have been gradually adding up and adding up. You know, a lot of cities are growing, the city's moving down over here. You know, Horizon is pretty full. You days are getting full as well. So nearly plants, havens, doesn't trickle down all the way to Anhorn. So we're trying to implement this so it could be better for the client so it can maximize its backyard space.
Motion to approve, second.
We already have a motion.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Villalobos?
And, and the question is, I, I believe to Mr. Gaynor, directing it to him. So if I'm, if I'm hearing this correctly, right now our setbacks are?
Ten feet, ma'am.
Ten on each side.
Yes, ma'am.
And you would like each side to be five, or it would be?
Yes, ma'am.
More beneficial. Mr. Gaynor, how would that affect any, would it be just for pools or would it be for?
Yes, ma'am.
Completely setbacks for whatever?
Yes, ma'am. Carlos Gaynor, once again. So Ms. Colom Villalobos, first of all, the gentleman is correct. Our staff member, Mr. Harkes, has been working with him, and we've been reviewing it. And between the R one and the R two, there's some conflict there, right? When you consider that you need twenty-five feet from the house to the back of the, of the, of the yard for the, for the yard, rear yard setback, there is some conflict there. And so the change that the gentleman is proposing, and therefore you would be proposing through your vote, would, would be strictly for pools. And so if you read it, it's really, it's really restrictive. It doesn't allow for any room. You can't have it any closer. I believe it's five feet from the house. And then, so it reads the pool, the pool shall be closer than five feet from any property line. That's for the R one. And then for the R two, it should be no closer than ten feet. So anyhow, there's some conflict there. And so we're happy, we, the reason I have it marked up is because we have, the gentleman had already brought it to our attention. We had looked at it. There is some conflict there that you could use a cleanup of the code to make it easier for swimming pools to be constructed, ma'am. Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we suspend the rules for this gentleman?
Motion to suspend the rules, second. Three minutes.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. My name is Danny Villarreal, and I am a general contractor. I own eco-friendly pools, and we provide prefabricated swimming pools to the general public, residential homeowners. And also, within those same, I guess, restrictions that homeowners are subject to, is one of the base materials that is excluded in installing here in the city of Socorro is steel. And there's been significant progress in the development of prefabricated pools. And our product line specifically targets steel containers, recycling, upcycling these steel containers, you know, and designing them specifically for in-ground prefabricated pools. And so part of those restrictions, part of that archaic, I guess, designation that's in the city of Socorro does not allow for steel containers to be put in the ground. And I was looking for advice for council on how we can overcome something like that.
Can we add that?
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Can we add that, or?
So I think we've already passed the motion. I think what we need to do is redirect the staff to go out and look at it, and they can come back with comments.
Ms. Villalobos?
So, I'm sorry. So right now, in, in, in our rules and regulations, we don't have anything for steel for prefabricated pools, correct? Correct?
We're good, yeah. Ms. Colom Villalobos, so that's, that's correct. So also, this gentleman has stopped by our office. On this particular issue, what he is requesting is that, what the boxcars, there's another term, right?
And I mean, they, and they don't look like box.
Yeah, understood.
I mean, they're completely, you know, a finished product once they arrive on the property.
Yes, sir. So that is not, that, that's, he's correct. That, for lack of a better term, boxcars are not allowed to be used as any material within the city of Socorro, and especially not in swimming pools. I don't have enough information for you to, to let you know whether, I have, I don't have an opinion until we do some research. But again, that's something that, that would require a code amendment, ma'am.
Ms. Villalobos?
So what we're saying right now is, go ahead, I'm going to approve the first item, and then add to it to go, to send you guys out to do studies on these steel boxes.
Well, you've already approved, you've already approved the item the way it was written. It's already done. You just suspended the rules to allow this gentleman.
To allow him to speak. So this item needs to come? Okay.
It's a brand new item, and that's fine.
Yes.
No, no problem. And, but I just didn't know how to address it, and, and I wanted to take the opportunity to do that since, you know, we already have the issue up. But thank you. I'll go and do that.
Item number twenty-two. Discussion and action to expand, expand the participation of IDA students to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and experience the local government function at council meetings.
Motion to approve, second. Could I have a comment on this? I would just like to expand it to all kids. Can we do that? Can we do a motion, or we do it to all kids? There's kids in our city that actually don't go to school here. There's kids in our city that actually are homeschool. There's kids in our city that, so any, I would like to expand it where it's four to eighteen, and they know how to do it. And, and just make sure that we include all our kids here in the city of Socorro who live in our boundaries, participate in, in our programs. Just make sure we do that, just to make sure that we don't leave anybody out. Homeschool kids, kids who go to private schools, kids who go to our district schools, and just live in our boundaries. I would really appreciate that, if that's okay.
I agree. Mr. Reyes?
Would that be covered with, where it says any student?
I think the language needs to stay within the city of Socorro, but, yeah, my concern is the staff being able to identify who's homeschool and who isn't. It's very simple for us to call up a school within our city or IDA school, which is, which is a known educational facility, and, and not, like, how do we reach out to those who homeschool?
There's kids, no, we don't reach out to them. They reach out to us. And there's kids from every school here that don't come, that don't live in Socorro. So if we're going to open it up, want to open it up to residents, and if they attend here, that'd be okay as well.
I'm sorry. Did you say residents of Socorro only, even though they're not?
Well, as long as they're, you know, like, if we, I just want to make sure that the kids, like, they go to school here. There's a lot, and there's a lot of kids that live in Socorro but go to school somewhere else.
I think you used the term student in general, and that takes care of all that. Students who attend school within the city limits of Socorro, I think that takes care of.
Students.
It's all inclusive.
All students?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
All students.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevarez.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Yes.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-six. Discussion and action to approve resolution seven oh six and letter urging Governor Greg Abbott to call a special emergency session to address gun violence.
Motion to approve, second.
Mayor and Council, so as you all know, our city made national headlines with the, with the incidents that occurred not too long ago with, with mass shootings. And I think that as a city and the leadership here within the city of Socorro, it's, it's time that we, we take action. I know parents and teachers, and I know myself as a parent, I'm, I have concerns when it comes to a topic like this. It's, it's a very touchy subject. But I think that this is one way that the city of Socorro, we can hold vigils all day long. We're, we're good at that, right? And we can do that all day long. But let's put our words into action now. And I think by writing this letter, I think that the, the city can, along with, with the county and surrounding cities here, have, have done so. But again, this is the only way that we're going to get our word across. We, like I mentioned, we can sit here and have vigils all day. We can send blessings and prayers all day long, but we need to put our words into action. So the summary, if, if you'll indulge me, I'll, I'll read it as quick as possible. It states, "On behalf of the City Council of the City of Socorro, Texas, we're writing this letter to urge you to call an emergency legislative session in order to address the current gun epidemic that has haunted our state for so long. Texas leads the nation in mass shootings. After each shooting, we stand somber with our fellow Texans. Watch the countless press conferences, attend round tables, and hear our state leadership promise change. After Uvalde, we implore our state leaders to take real action now with stricter gun laws and more resources for mental health. In twenty nineteen, our lives changed forever when a gunman, a Texan, drove across our state and opened fire on an El Paso Walmart with an AK forty-seven, taking the lives of twenty-three innocent people and injuring twenty-seven on August third. And response, the Texas Safety Commission was created to identify strategies to help prevent mass shootings, but has failed to pass any meaningful legislation that addresses gun control. The city of Socorro supports evidence-based, common sense gun safety laws. We support categorizing gun violence as a serious public health issue and urge the state to provide meaningful enforceable solutions to prevent further mass shootings. If the state had taken these steps since the shooting in El Paso's Walmart in twenty nineteen, we wholeheartedly believe lives could have been saved. On behalf of the city of Socorro and the Texas families who will be sending their children back to school this fall, the teachers, counselors, and support staff who are the backbone of our education system, we urge you to reconvene the eighty-seventh Texas Legislature for a special session to address gun violence effective immediately. We implore you to not only consider legislation aimed at placing the burden of gun violence on our teachers, administrators, and students, as you have done in the past legislative sessions, rather to enact legislation that will prevent the next massacre. As proud Texans, we urge the Texas Legislature to consider the following. And the following are required training to include a license to carry, a universal background check on all firearms, the age to purchase an assault rifle to be raised to twenty-one years of age.
to 21 years of age, risk protective order laws, closing the gun show loophole, greater access to mental health services, and social media safety and threat assessment."
Yeah.
Ms. Villalobos?
So, and I love the letters, and, and everything it stands for. So my question is, this is just one letter, and I don't know if it'll make a huge difference to Abbott. Is there any other council within our city, within our state, that you, anybody know that are banding together to urge Mr. Abbott or Governor Abbott to move forward with this session?
Absolutely. So we have the city of El Paso, along with the, the county as well, that are actually backing this. They've, they've actually written their own version of this. I thought that the city of Socorro needs to put their personal stamp on it, which is why I wanted to bring it to the table today. I want, I want this council to be, to be an active one and a, an inclusive one when it comes to supporting this type of, of effort. I'm a gun owner myself, I'm, I'm all for Second Amendment rights. But again, we don't sit in the Texas Legislature right now. This is all we can do right now as the acting government body for the city of Socorro. So I think that this letter right here, and urging Governor Abbott to, to call this, this special session, it, it solidifies what we're trying to do as a committee, especially a committee that's been affected by gun violence here in, in the city of Socorro. I think our kids deserve a better place. I think our kids, our teachers, our administrators, and support staff do not have to go to school this fall in fear of something like this happening again in our community. I don't want this to happen, so I'd rather be proactive than reactive.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Can we suspend the rules for this gentleman?
Sure.
Can we have a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules. Go ahead, sir, three minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Just now, I thought that it could be included in your position to check all the television programs that promote the violence and also the video games that need to be checked.
Thank you. Yeah, Jim, may I make a, a statement?
You've suspended the rules, but you haven't, yes, you can, yes.
Okay. So in, in the letter, we, we've addressed the social media safety and threat assessment, and I want to say that, that in the threat assessment, along with the social media, we'll be able to cover categories such as the, the violent video games and, and maybe some of the, the shows that are being broadcasted right now as well.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez, do we have anything on 27, 28, and 29?
No, ma'am. Motion to delete, 27, 28, and 29. Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia?
Aye.
Rudy Cruz?
Yes.
And Ivan Colombia Lobo?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 7:31 PM. Good night.
Goodbye.